He's the one that set up the cause. And the reason he wanted, the reason he wanted the sewer department to...
Whenever you were replacing that dent?
So we could split it off like he did. So we could split it off like he did the wash.
We're plugging it in. We're gonna wait till fall?
All right, seven o'clock, and I would call the Village of Webster regular meeting June 28, 2018, to order, and our first order of business would be to stand and let's do the flag. Jake, would you lead us, please?
What do we do to the United States of America and to a republic which sustains one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for all?
Thanks very much, seated. And I will now open up the floor to public comment. We would like to address the board. We're welcome to do so at this time. Richard Walder, Chairman, Webster Citizens Action League. On behalf of myself and the Webster Citizens Action League, I'd like to wish the board, all the village employees, and all the residents of the Village of Webster, a happy and safe Fourth of July.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Definitely a safe one, remember fireworks and all that kind of thing. We do believe that the ground displays are in order, but the aerials are not part of the code, are they? Will, regarding you, they're not allowed, are they, the aerials?
Well, sprinklers or sparklers are allowed.
They won't work very good.
Sorry, I'm always thinking, you know. It's funny, I was in Walmart last night, I think it was, and they had a whole section of fireworks in there.
Really?
All kinds of fireworks, yeah, I'm like, hmm, oh, yeah, that'll get it. New York State allowed a certain amount, but I'm not sure where they went with it, so...
What's our code?
We don't address fireworks per se.
The flag was two pieces. One of those, what do you think? Five, going out of the count.
Oh, is that gonna be in the neighborhood then?
No, not in the neighborhood. All right, well, thank you very much, and I'm sure everybody's looking forward to this weekend. Ninety degrees, ninety-four degrees. I think it looks good for the Fourth of July also, so people will be enjoying the thickets outdoors.
Great, the Village weather, man.
Sorry.
Okay, we're done now?
I thought you could celebrate now.
He's bringing the heat here. A little later.
A little later.
A little later. All right, so we move down to village court business, and our first order of business is to approve our minutes, first of all, from the workshop on the June 5th. One thing that is not noted on here is that under discussion of the village band, the village band was invited to appear tonight. They do not have a, they don't have a concert tonight, they opened up last week, and we invited them to appear and to give a little bit of music and all of that, and originally they had agreed, but they apparently declined the invitation. The other thing that I would note on here is under discussion of the micro cell towers, that should be a discussion regarding the Cohen Law Group, not the law group. We already have...
Yes.
So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of...
Eric, I'll go. On the village band discussion?
Yes, sir.
Where it says Attorney Dan White explained that if the band was a separate entity, they would have bylaws. I didn't say that. If they were a separate entity, they would be able to have bylaws. In their current structure, they can't have bylaws. They're not, shouldn't be able to.
If they were a separate entity, they would.
Yes.
We'll read that, and bylaws to abide by. With those changes, through the minutes, I have to make the, I have approval of the workshop minutes for June 5th.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the next one is the board meeting of June 14, 2018. We had an awful lot of transfers. In this one?
One penny and two cents.
Hopefully seventy-six cents.
Also, we also had in this, we set aside the proposed agreement with the village and the Webster Volunteer Fire Department. In the intervening time, I have not heard any clarification on that, unless necessarily, but I haven't heard any, and so that will continue to hold until we get a little bit more information. So, that being said, there's no additions or deletions, other than, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make that motion. Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Okay, next we have resolution to approve claims and warrants. I had an opportunity to look them over. Hopefully, you guys did your emails as well, since Jerry was in signing the whole, my one. One particular question, that would be to Jake, regarding the repair of a window, side window on a truck at Seward.
What was that?
Oh, that was a John Deere back home. It, that was something rolled into it last fall at the wellfields. They were moving something around, and the window broke, and it was in the wellfields, and we were, we ordered a window, I'm trying to remember, considerably less than what we were looking at a window for originally. We ordered a window online, it was a hundred and sixty dollars, and it came out and replaced it for two hundred and something. I think the original estimate for the window replacement was closer to a thousand dollars. So...
Do we carry glass on our vehicles, or not?
I think on the regular passenger vehicles we do, but I don't believe on the equipment, because they're acting on a different type of policy. I can answer that question.
I don't know. Something to look into.
Yes.
Especially with equipment like that, where rocks or other things can certainly crack or break it. Just took me by surprise, there was, there wasn't a bill for the glass, but there was, I think, for the, I love that showed up elsewhere, but we did have a replacement.
The glass is probably on, it'll be on the first bank card, one, because that was ordered online from JohnDeereParks.com, or TractorParks.com, or something. Wasn't that farmersonly.com, though?
Do they make special roadkill bulbs?
Must be.
Special roadkill bulbs?
Yeah, they're on here.
I have something new to me.
Probably, probably barging in bulbs that they're, probably wrote a note on there saying we're gonna pick up our bulbs. I don't know, they have that really small ones. Don't know what kind of animal or woman on, I guess, but...
That's what it said, bulbs for roadkill.
It's kinda like a waste at that point. Do you have a gift well soon card?
All right, well, I have a motion to approve the claims and warrants to be paid.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Do you have to say opposed if we all said aye?
I don't say.
Why not?
All right, financial statements, there are a lot of pages to this, but we had an opportunity to look through. There are a lot of one-hundred percent, as transfers were made last time. This is a 531 ending report, and so we see that there are quite a few movement has caused lines beyond...
Got it, even don't.
So, for your information, and you will hear a little bit more as we move forward with the audit.
Yeah.
Hopefully approval tonight. Next, we do have a resolution to approve some budget modifications, and I will read those through. We'll do it as we did before, I will read them in group for the general budget, and then for the sewer. We'll do it for 2018, and then we will do one for 2019. So, for finishing up the May 31, general fund budget modifications in 2018, first of all, we have from the Economic Development App, forty-seven thirty, being transferred to plants and baskets, forty-seven dollars and thirty cents for year-end adjustments. Secondly, we have from major road repairs, eight thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-nine cents moving to the village attorney for 2017 attorney fees related to the non-law suit, eight thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-nine cents. A positive note, I received a letter today from the, from Don Kelly White Firm, stating that the one gentleman who did not join the group in their delegation has signed that he is no longer going to bring anything against the village. Correct, Don?
Yes, he, he agreed to discontinue his part of the lawsuit.
So, that puts to rest the non-law suit, with the exception of, except for, well, very positive thing. Next, from the copier line, one hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-three cents to the line for gas, 2018 fiscal year expenses were slightly higher than budgeted for. From major road repairs, again, six thousand nine hundred and five dollars and twenty-seven cents to RGE streetlights, six thousand nine hundred and five dollars and twenty-seven cents for streetlight electricity, slightly higher than budgeted for. May I have a motion to approve these modifications of the general fund for 2018?
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have that sewer budget modification for 2018, one item, from office supplies, three hundred and sixty dollars and forty-nine cents, to social security, three hundred and sixty dollars and forty-nine cents. Social security hired due to unbudgeted amount for social security under retro pay union employees in 2017. That was a year spent negotiating and already being caught up FBS. So can I have a motion to approve that budget modification?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. General fund budget modifications for this year, and that is from, first of all, records retention, six thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-three cents, to clerk, treasurer, equipment, six thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-three cents. Apparently, the amount budgeted for records retention should have been budgeted in the equipment line, as they are getting a new microfashion machine, which has been an item of discussion, and it is an item whose cost should be capitalized. So, can I have a motion to approve this modification for the year?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. We are looking next here to authorize the mayor to sign an audit engagement letter with Freed Maxick. The objective, of course, is to look at each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information as of and for the year ending May 31, 2018, which collectively comprised the basic financial statement, statements for the village. The amount, the fund, well, first of all, the funds that are going to be looked at and are maintained by the village, be included as part of the audit, are as follows, the general fund, the sewer fund, the capital projects fund, and the agency fund. And the amount for this, the fees for the audit and accounting services described above are based on the value of the services performed and the time required. Our fee for services described in this letter will not exceed nine thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And their fee estimate and completion of work is based on the criteria of anticipated cooperation from the village, timely responses to inquiries, timely completion delivery of client assistant requests, communication of all accounting and financial reporting matters, and the assumption that unexpected circumstances will not be encountered during the engagement. I believe that all of you have been asked to respond regarding any information you may have to Freed Maxick, to Laura, regarding anything that you may suspect as fraud, and if you have not done that, and you do suspect anything, you should do that prior to the audit. So, do I have a, I would entertain anyways, a motion to allow me to sign a letter of agreement with Freed Maxick for an audit not to exceed nine thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None? Motion carried. Next, the resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the annual update of documents, completion letter. This, I believe, is something that filed documents have been done with the state, have been filed with the state as required, and this letter of engagement, fees for the service for this letter, based upon the time and material, standard rates and fee for this service will be one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, something that, seems to be done annually, and I would entertain a motion to authorize myself to sign the completion letter with Freed Maxick.
I'll make that motion. And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next, we have a discussion on the Cohen Law Group, and I provided, I hope that all of you received it in email, the others sent out to you, the engagement letter that they sent to us, as well as the information regarding their service, what they do, the benefits of the wireless facilities regulation, the scope of services that they provide, professional background, and the cost of their services, which I believe we have talked about the last time, and that cost is a flat fee. It is a total of four thousand five hundred dollars, flat fee. The only thing that would not be included in that would be any copying and postage charges that they would have to send us information. I believe that a lot of the conversation would be done, possibly over the phone, they will look for a contact person, and I do suggest possibly that that be Will, as a code enforcement officer, and one who deals with code, and will also... But, you would have to agree with that, and I don't know your stance, I think Carl, you responded that you are in favor...
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Following through with this. Jerry, I think you...
I think it should, we should really get ahead of that, because in my experience with telephone and cable TV, they, they jump quick, and if we don't have that in place, that stuff will be in our polls before we know what's going on, because they just come right down the street and just do it without, you know, you gotta catch 'em. And some of that stuff gets pretty involved, as far as the antenna, the equipment itself, for cell is of two, maybe two to three foot high, and they request the right to put them in poles in the right of way and not in the right of way, and also, they request permission to possibly place new poles in the right of way, up to one hundred and twenty-five feet high. I don't wanna see that in my neighborhood, I don't know about you guys. So, having read the whole thing, I'm fully in favor of going ahead with this, and have them go to word for us.
I actually spoke to an attorney from Nixon Peabody today about this specific issue, because already Verizon wants to come in, and there's one private parcel that we can handle right now through planning and zoning. But we, we went through this whole thing about them putting it in the right of way, and I said, well, right now, the only teeth we have is we would require a permit from them to operate in our right of way and have like a maintenance bond or something. That being said, I mentioned that we were entertaining acquiring the company there, the Cohen Law Group. He says, oh yeah, I'm very familiar with them, a lot of municipalities are using them. So, that was a good sign to me. This is what we're gonna do. I just think if we use them, we'll get the most up-to-date, you know, to make sure it covers what all the new technologies that, you know, the carriers are coming out with, you know?
Things change, man.
Right, and I think this is all these people do, so they keep up with all that.
They're talking here about twenty years specializing exclusively in representing municipalities in cable, wireless, and broadband matters.
So are we gonna need to do a budget transfer of some kind, since this was not budgeted?
I believe that, I've asked the question where money would come from, and the answer that I received initially is that we have a money set aside in a contingency fund that we can apply to this. And I know it's early on in the year to do that.
What's in that contingency fund?
Ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, that is a bunch.
Not too much at all.
No, it is not.
But on the other hand...
I don't know how much of it we used last year, but...
On the other hand, though, it's really, it's really important that we do this.
We need to do this.
There are so many other reasons that we have to do that, you know, we probably don't want to get into that, but... I'm sure that Cohen Law Agency will cover all of our questions with very good answers. If you want me to work with Tom and look in on what he plans to do.
Well, I, I think that it is something that we definitely need to do. I would not like to have us, as Don mentioned, if you don't have something in place, you can't say...
There's no negotiation at all.
Only permit, so, and they won't vote if they don't need it.
Am I allowed to put input? I only say it because I lived in Charlotte, North Carolina, and worked for AT&amp;T, and they're moving fast.
They are.
So I would definitely consider this. They're moving very fast.
Yes.
Change in technology, it changes better.
And we're behind the times by about five years up here.
And here, they talk about the number of DAS networks expected to grow dramatically within the next few years. They talk about right now, S and P Global Market Intelligence, an estimated one hundred and fifty thousand facilities will be constructed and installed at the end of 218, increasing to maybe four hundred and fifty-five, almost half a million by 2020. So, it's going to be very quick. And it's interesting to me that the three proposed applications, I guess, if you will, that have been here by Verizon, are by Verizon, which is only halfway up the pole. So I don't know if in that decision, they're coverage out over a greater area, or if they're just looking to get ahead of the game, I don't know.
I think a lot of it has to do with, they, I can say this, don't put the camera on me, I think they wanna get rid of cable, and everything go wifi.
That's a hundred percent.
Yep.
No question at all, that's the goal. Cable's done.
That's why they're trying to increase their coverage.
It's why AT&amp;T just bought Fox.
Well, they have to purchase interest in every single pole they attach it from either the phone company's space, or RGE's space, or the cable TV's space, and that could be a considerable amount of money, you know? I can't remember what the attachment rates are right now, but anyways, it would cost them a lot of money to do that. Thousands, you know?
Well, when that comes, when push comes to shove, what'll happen is you see New York State pass a law limiting the amount of money that utilities have authorized its terms to, because they're FCC regulated industry.
But it's when the Public Service Commission gets about all those groups.
Whatever has the money.
They're the regulation, you know, they're regulatory, so... On the other hand, though, it's good revenue for it, though.
I think it's something they can charge beyond the cost of what it charged, costs us to permit and to manage it, right? The ones that are up.
We can charge, and I think if we looked at different fee schedules, and one of the things is an annual, and it's really minimal, right of way fee, the cost of the permit, like Jake said, but there's no franchise fee. We don't own the poles or anything that they're going on.
The cost would be split three, into three parts, the billing would be one-third at the beginning, as we begin the project, one-third during the middle, or at the middle, and one-third at the conclusion, when they provide us the, the law. I, I think that it's something we need to do, I think we'll find the money for it, we certainly have it, just a matter of using that early, but I think it's something that we need to, so, rather be proactive on it. So, I will ask for a motion to allow myself to enter into an agreement, engagement for wireless communication services with the Cohen Law Group, for a total amount of four thousand five hundred dollars, to be paid in thirds.
That's not, not to exceed, we're not gonna all of a sudden turn into eight grand or something?
No, the additional, the only, the only addition that would be... No, the additional, the only, the only additions that would be for the postage copying charges, should be that, that we might be able to do some of them except for the posted. And also, should they need in an unlikely event to come here, otherwise, I believe that they will have communication with a point person. Again, I will put Carl and, Carl from the board and, and.
Yep. I make the motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Move forward.
So if you want to sign that, I will get it back to Dan Cohen.
Okay. Discussion next is on the large meeting room. Weight watchers group. I believe that, Carl, you were talking about this, Weight Watchers are looking to utilize this room, every Saturday.
Every Saturday, and they're aware of the cause. Joe, did you talk to them?
Yeah, a woman came in last week and looked at the room. She was interested in the space. Her only concern was having someone set up chairs for them ahead of time. She didn't want to have to rely on their supervisors or, or individuals who came to meet to have to do that once they got here. The way she described it is, she kind of, they kind of want everyone to face one another so that they can engage in discussions and that sort of thing. So at that point, I think they're all, had.
So it involves the chairs that are set here, for example, simply turning them so that this row that's facing here faces that way and.
Right.
There's 50 chairs here right now. Did they give you a number?
Well, she said they get anywhere from 50 to 70 people typically, depending on the time of year.
I don't know.
Yeah. So a couple of concerns that came up, just because of our, the form that we use for renting a room. On the form, we stipulate that we do not set up chairs and tables for them. They have to set up their own setup, however they want it. So we would have to kind of waive that as far as setting up the chairs for them. Couple other concerns that came up was because this would be Saturday mornings, we would either need to get them a key Friday, or, or set up, Jake was talking with us about a key fob for them to get in the building Saturday morning. But then it also involves having someone to come back after the bet to make sure the building is locked back up.
So then, then that's cost is now not that cost because you're having overtime, people with things. So may want to reconsider.
Better add that to the cost.
Well, that's what I was wondering if we could, yeah.
Well, if we rent the room on a weekend now, we don't have anybody come back and ensure that it's locked up on our general basis, or anything.
Well, I don't, I don't know. I thought you could, either you or somebody swung by later, no?
No, it's a lot of time to be, like, walking on there, but I don't know, but I'll use it there, some of the year, so.
Okay.
Especially with these fobs, your, two years back, we spent a bit on these fobs. One of them operates that door and you can program them to, you know, they can open Saturday morning at 9:00 AM and drop back off at noon, or whatever it is, so you can program an individual fob and then you can shut them off so they don't work anymore. You can do stuff like that.
Does this system send out email communication or anything, but doors are jarted on a fob if someone leaves it away?
No, no, and, and what it's not gonna do too is presumably the first person that gets here is gonna unlock the door and it's not gonna tell us if they turned the whole thing, but it's, you have to make sure, we discuss it with who's here and they will no longer be their meeting place if they don't lock the place up.
That's right. So we leave the chairs up until Monday morning when normal work day starts? You know, you guys could like tape them down or something?
Yeah, usually, but under rental form now, it says that the, the chairs are, you know, when, if somebody rents a room, they're, they leave it basically like that, set up for immediate end of it. And we've never moved, they haven't set up, set up a room for anybody before, because they think that's.
I'm just saying, break it down, not set it up.
Yeah.
Because they might, I think if they hit the opportunity, they might set up 20 chairs. Then, like, your guys could take them down on Monday morning. As long as it stays, it'll do if it's not snowing and all the.
That costs money.
You know what I mean? That, that so much depends on that.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I think if they can come in here and use the room as it is and, and move a chair, I mean, that, or having the chairs under a rack and when they walk in, grab a chair and.
Well, I think that's what they're, that's what they're trying to avoid.
Yeah, that's why they want to move.
She is, she has looked at a couple other locations, they're even considering a meeting room at a hotel. They're getting away from meeting in churches. And this was, this idea came up, and Carol, I think you had mentioned it.
A meeting room in a hotel. What does it cost to rent this take down?
It would be the non-residency for them, which the first hour is 50 and every additional hour is 30. So she indicated it would be about two hours. So it would be, you know, 80 a week, potentially about four grand a year.
Jake has to come and check the door and already down it 80 bucks?
I mean, if you're, if, if you're not doing it now, you're not opposed to, you know, not having someone come back later and check the door?
No.
Then I guess it's not as big of a consideration. She indicated to me that she was looking at, at one or two other places that she would get back within about a week to let us know. She was still interested, but having the chairs set up was definitely a request.
Is the chair, would a chair take down, or let's say put back? In other words, if these chairs were facing each other on Friday or Saturday morning, would they be willing to simply turn them back so that they're now facing this way?
I didn't ask that question.
So that, so that we don't have to have somebody come up here on Monday morning?
I don't think she's supposed to, you know.
I, I'm just asking.
Asking her the question like she's supposed to.
Well, I will, I will tell you. I will tell you with iCircle right now, I come up and, and make sure the room is ready. Like, after the meeting tonight, I'll pull these chairs against the wall, I'll pull out the, the narrow tables that they want for tomorrow morning. I, I've been doing that for iCircle that comes Friday mornings as it is. I don't mind moving a couple rows of chairs if that's all it takes come Monday after they've been here.
So Jody asked if they would do that.
If they don't want to, if they don't want to set the room up in the first place, why do you think they're gonna want to put it back?
Exactly.
To me, to me, it's either do both or you don't do any of them.
Because you like to just come in and it's ready. Now, when you leave, all you do is turn your chair, find that kind of.
What you want to pay for, if you want it all done, well, you're taking down the hotel leave bay or your back end.
Maybe we go.
But I would assume you'll pay a little more than you could argue.
Yeah, you would, yeah.
You gotta weigh out the options, you know what you'd rather do.
See what you just did there?
Oh, I like that. Joe, could you contact the, who is it you're dealing with?
Natalie.
Yeah, Natalie, could you contact Natalie and tell her what we're, what we're talking about, what we're discussing here? And see exactly what she wants to do with that.
Well, I, I can tell you that she, she wants to know that we'll set up the chairs for them and have the room stuck. They don't need tables. Matter of fact, this didn't seem to be an issue, these tables and the board table is still right there. They just want the chairs in the middle to be set up for the meeting. And I'll be honest, the impression I got was that that would be a deal breaker.
Yeah, I know a group I'm with has used a small meeting room and it was up to us to set it up the way we wanted it and tear it down. It was not included in the price. You should, if you're expending village labor, the village should be compensated for that labor, whether it's 10 minutes or two hours.
I mean, that's something that could be negotiated.
Well, that's what.
For an extra small fee.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a small add-on charge, it should be.
If Jake wants to come in on a Saturday and rearrange things.
Yeah, he's on salary, so it wouldn't matter.
Oh.
Gosh.
You're a friend.
I'll help, I'll help you, Jake. I'll help you, I'll help you. Call me.
Two half hours.
It seems like it would be.
Wait, what you did? Joe, what about trick or treat, Joe?
Yeah, well, and, and that was something I did mention to her. I said there was one Saturday in particular out of the year where we, we had the costume contest.
Right.
And I did tell her that that would take precedence over a meeting on that particular Saturday.
And I think we should be consistent with our message and how we rent the room.
Absolutely.
Accommodate for this group, then it's the next group.
You don't want to keep doing that.
So it should be consistent.
So, yeah, if they, they want us to do that, then they can pay for it.
It's cheap. We rent halls a lot for retreats, and this is cheap, so.
Yeah.
It should really include much more than having the space.
So if it's two hours, 80 bucks, make it 100. It's 20 bucks.
It's not the best air conditioner in this side of the state.
But, hey.
I think when, I, no, I can't vote or say anything.
I mean, is that something you are willing to consider if we add an extra 20 dollars and have it 100 per meeting?
I don't think it's just a yes answer from the board. I, I like, you know, depending on what staff is doing, and I think the department head should have a say in, say in it a bit, as I'm looking at Jake.
I have no problem if Joe wants to come up and move the chairs. No, I just, I just want to make sure, obviously, if it's snowing, like you mentioned, if it's snowing or we have a storm or this or that, that's obviously gonna take precedence to doing it. And I was just whispering in a little sidebar with Will here, there is for, hurry perks, if somebody rents the van's shell there, there is an option for if somebody has come in and stand by or turn the power on or something, there is something on the fee schedule, and I think you guys are doing the fee schedule at the next meeting, might be something that you can.
That's not a bad idea.
You know, you can, you can add into there, you know, some extra hours, you know, if there's.
Setup.
Setup or something like that, you could add that to the fee schedule. I think that there's a, you know, it's 80 bucks or 50 and 20, but if there's a setup carriage, it's a minimum of one hour, such and such a, you know, rate or a minimum of certain fee for that.
Yeah.
An offset that, you know, literally, you know, if you're turning the chairs 90 degrees, I don't quite get the, the issue with that. It's turning chairs 90 degrees, they're not thrones or, or light chairs. But if that's all it takes, that's gonna take five minutes, you know, so you're gonna take 10 minutes, so if you have a minimum, hey, it's gonna be 20 dollars or something like that, providing we got the time, but we got enough people that work within the village, that one of us should be able to get it. I mean, it's not a, it's not a huge thing, but there would have to be, I think, a fee because it's something that we don't do, you know, that, that's, that's part of the room rentals, that you don't do setups, and how would you, I don't know if there's a chair, a chair turning fee we could ask, or, I don't, it seems like we've talked about it a lot longer than it was time to take the turn of chairs.
Yeah, then 20 bucks is worth that a lot.
No, I mean, it's, it's.
It's 100 bucks.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's another, that's a couple bucks a year. We're turning chairs.
We'll take it.
Yeah, I'll turn them every day.
You're so easy.
So you would go back there and tell her that?
I, I'll get back in touch with her. I just want to make sure, you know, the 20 dollars fees is what we're, we're talking.
We would use the fob, Jake?
Jake.
No, I'm sorry, I was looking at the fee schedule.
For opening, closing, we'd use the fob.
I think, I, I don't, the previous person that was in charge of the fob system, I don't know if he shared any information with anybody about it, so we'd have to figure out.
I think.
I mean, mine works, but I don't know how to set the times. I know it's possible, there's a program that it's linked in and you can, but I.
But we'll attach them.
Me and Will.
Answers are.
Could you give me a minute? I come up my way.
What, the, the, this fob? Yeah, we could, definitely, we can figure out, but we have to figure out a program on when we have access to it. Yeah, oh yeah, there's a bag, there's a bag.
So if we're gonna start doing this, at least this out more, we should look at a different, you know, electronic strike or something up there, so on a board meeting, the door's unlocked from seven till whenever, you can do it right from your phone, and then the electronic strike, so you don't have to do that alumni more. I mean, that, you're letting human error decide whether your building's unlocked or not. That's really not a safe.
You too.
We have no strike laws, we can't.
Yeah.
No strike laws.
I tried to.
I can take it out of contingency fees.
In terms of the increase in, in cost, Jake, there's somebody who is usually on weekend duty, is there? Would that be something that, with the increase in cost, would they be willing to do that, or is it an emergency based only, or?
Yeah, typically, that's an emergency, you know, telephone standby that you're.
You pay them.
Yeah, yeah, they get a, there's a, a comp time component to it, and they're on emergency standby to answer the phone calls and come in if there's any, any issues, but, you know, when they come in, then, then they're on overtime when they come in, so, and it's part of what's in the union contract, so.
Is it a four hour minimum?
No, no, we don't do that.
It is like.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of municipalities that are like that originally where it's, it's one hour minimum or time spent, whatever is.
Whatever time.
You almost talked about this longer than the box of screws.
I just took that.
All right, well, let's find out if they're willing to use some chairs. Are they willing to pay 100 dollars?
Yeah.
Get back to us.
Yep.
Good discussion. Don, you have something for us?
Uh, no. I think they have Sprint, at least, that they would.
Sure, we'll move on then. Will? Oh, yes. Let's see, no, no, before we do that, I'd like to ask Joe to explain a little bit about the item on your planning and zoning board. There were a couple of items, I think there have been over the years, more than a couple, but there are two specific items and issues that have fallen through the cracks a little bit. One is probably two years old at this particular point, and that is regarding signage code change. The other has to do with something. The other has to do with something that is more recent, and that is color palette for the bid and for the business districts. Both of these received positive recommendations to move forward from the boards to the village board, and they have not come before us. So I give this word to you, Joe.
Okay, well, the, regarding the color palette, it was spent on April 5th of this year. Peter Elder came before the planning board and Duke was there to discuss a proposal of a color palette of suggested colors to be used in the central business district. At the end of that meeting, the planning board had written up a motion for a positive recommendation to the village board to accept the color palette presented. To be included in the application process as suggested colors for the central business district. So I'm merely bringing this then in front of the board because I don't know that the board was even aware of that recommendation about the color palette. It wasn't something that was to be added off the code necessarily. It was just to include in the application process. When businesses are, are setting up their buildings, deciding on paint colors, sign colors, that sort of thing.
Peter and I had talked about it and.
Yeah.
For why?
Because we didn't, well, yeah, what?
You brought it.
Coming, coming before, a long time ago. I mean, it's been going for years. But we didn't think, because it wasn't going to be part of the code, that we had to. Not that we wouldn't love the approval for the colors.
Well, I think we probably could approve that it be included in the application process. At least, you know, the recommendation of this particular. Not early, unless we did a code change, we can't enforce that.
In our comprehensive.
Right.
We have a design guideline.
Exactly.
So we could actually, two things, that reminds me, we probably should be looking at our comprehensive plan now because it's been over five years.
Yes, that was, I played to do and I have, we got a list of people and I have asked actually several whether they'd be interested in getting together.
And so maybe in the next comprehensive plan, we can include the list of colors.
Well, it would be. I think it's a look at, right? And we would be, well, we could adopt some changes, I suppose, to it. Could not prior to the next formal revamping of the motion. I have some issues that I would like to bring before this board as well, you know, the group regarding the comprehensive plan, and that is some things that have occurred since it was put together and, you know, accepted. There have been some things that have come about that were not included or not thought of at all.
Exactly.
And need to be considered. One of them being an establishment that butts up to the residential area, and there was only one other case that was kind of pre-existing down. What? Kilburg or maybe? That was an establishment that served up on, it was in a residential area. And the only one that now does that butts up to a residential area is the filling station. So it's new in terms of. But anyways, that's, that's, but there are several other issues too, but yes. So should we then include this right here?
And I think what stalled some of it was, if I remember correctly, I don't know if it was ever discussed, that the changes to the code. Were going to be brought to the bid because it would affect the bid, you know, the business, especially the businesses, obviously, the central business district specifically. That they would review it in the sign code to see, get some feedback from them. Whether or not we need, you know, feedback from them, that's up to the board because the board is the one that passes the law. But I think the general consensus, what, two, three years ago?
That's a plan, there isn't a law.
Was that, well, the sign code would be a law.
The sign code, that, yeah. And I believe that was brought to them, was it not?
No, it was not.
Was that brought to them at all?
Nope.
So those are the other topics that you have.
I believe that, that it got dropped because John, I believe our previous mayor was going to do that or was going to go to that. Or then we will make it known to Bill and to Elena.
The colors did.
Yeah.
I, I presented a color scheme to them at their meeting prior to the planning board meeting.
Right. And I had presented it to them.
Before that. So we actually, so they actually had it twice. They gave their approval both times, actually. And that's, and the second time was the reason why I came in front of the planning board. And this was on behalf of the store preservation commission. It was the one who threw Judy spearheaded this whole thing. And, and so our whole, our whole pitch to the planning board was to, you know, could we get a, could we get this into your, into your, you know, procedures when a, a business comes in front of you? And then the second step would be when Will is talking, because he's our, he's our point man in the village, really. So when Will's talking to somebody, could he actually say to them, well, we do have this really large, but, you know, we have a palette of colors, but it's broad. That you, that we would like to see you, you know, we'd suggest that you use for your building design. And so again, the, the idea wasn't incorporated in the code, but just to give them suggestions. And, and most of the time, when Will says something like that, they do it because he's just a very persuasive guy. So, you know.
Talk to my wife about how persuasive.
So could, could we do this? Could we have this color palette available in village hall? So that we can stop by, take a look at it, and then at the next meeting, if there's been positive recommendation coming through.
Yeah, I didn't even know where the three, I put three packages together of the various colors.
I, I did, I did scan it.
Well, his store preservation should have one.
I did, we do have, we do have, we do have an original, and I did scan the original and the scan was pretty good, and I sent that to Will, so.
But there's three originals someplace.
Yeah, I have one of them.
You have one.
I do.
And you have one.
I don't know, I don't know if, I never saw a third one, but.
Well, no, I put.
But again, just in case they got lost, I scanned them so that we didn't lose the color palette. And I did send that to Will so that he has that somewhere, so.
Well, I'd like to have that between me and you now and then to take a look at it. And then in our next meeting, if, we can certainly, we can certainly move to approve a suggestion that, you know. Needs be considered in the design or painting of any of the village's commentary, recommendation. That way, we are formal as a village board. We've looked at it. We approve that this is a good recommendation and should be part of the application process, these suggested colors.
Yep. It'd be for the central business district was the idea. So it's just CB, so.
The other is the proposed zoning code changes for signage and. Yeah, I do remember, we had quite a discussion with breakfast and Airbnbs and all of that kind of thing. This is, did not know anywhere, so, all right. Fortunately, we just had a meeting with the bid, so this will have to wait until the next meeting. But it can be brought before them and sent to Bill and Elena so that they are aware of it. And they can also put it on their website and somebody can, can become to. Try to attack this and, and. Thank you, Joe. And now we move to Will.
Just a couple of things because everything in here is basically, it is what it is as far as violations and complaints and the legal aspect and all the unregistered vehicles and things. Even Jerry is getting a kick out of it, so. So just a couple of things. Number one, we've been very busy mowing lawns, driving around, and this is always a time of year. We typically, and I like Jake's policy, is we'll issue a letter once a year, new year, new letter. Even if it's the same business that does the same thing the next year. And basically, the letter states, you have 10 days to mow your lawn. If you don't mow your lawn, then we come and mow your lawn and, well, by the way, from now on, every time we drive by and see a need to mow it, we'll mow it. It doesn't come cheap, but that's the incentive. And so. It's three hundred dollars. It used to be the going rate, and people are like, hey, mow my lawn then. That's great. So we might have to discourage them from. So anyways, so we've had a couple of properties that we've had to keep in and mow. A few, a few of them, struggling with one right now that I actually reported to New York State in their abandoned property law. So they've gotten back to me, which I sent all of you a copy of the letter they sent me, so hopefully I'll hear something soon. That one's in a weird situation, and usually the ones that end up like that always are in a weird situation. On top of that, you, you asked me a question about fireworks. Yes, our code addresses fireworks. It falls under the fire marshal section. Technically, you're not allowed to do fireworks without a permit and you have to get it from the fire marshal. But the fire marshal, basically, he covers like the, the major firework displays. He's not going to issue a permit for someone with a backyard, you know, typically, so. I am working right now on the unified solar permit and the code, tweaking it here and there. What's nice is they provide a boilerplate, so we just got to fill in some of the blanks, and then they give you choices in different sections of the code. So I'm working my way through that now, and when I'm done, I'll get it back to you. The formatting isn't very helpful, so I'm trying to, that's what's taking me so long, is the formatting part of it. But other than that, it's going along pretty quickly. As I said earlier, I've been in contact with an attorney for Verizon, and we were going back and forth on what to do with these things with the small cell antennas. Right now, there's nothing I can do. I have no teeth. The only thing that, like I said, with, from Jake's side, is that we have to get a permit to install any kind of facility within our right of way. Probably with a maintenance fund, I'm thinking, something like that. But other than that, if it, if it's not private property, if it's not something that has a tax ID technically, I mean. Even say R G and E has one big tax ID, but what's the location? I mean, I suppose I could figure something out like that, but we don't, it, it's not like it's owned privately by a resident. The one that is proposed somewhere off Barrett Drive, that one is owned by a business in, within the village limits and everything. So that one, we can, we have to go through the process. Any understandings? I think they're cooperative, which is wonderful. So that'll go through planning and zoning and all that. But other than that, really, I've got nothing. I've got no teeth, so. Make sure you have an engineer to review and make sure, start their own analysis of it and mow it. Well, that would be R G and E, R G and E or whoever owns the pole. They, actually, I called them the, the last meeting I was here. And they do that. That's what, they have people on staff. That's all they do is the, well, you know, right? The engineers look at the structural integrity of the poles or they're going to be putting the facility, even if they put in a new pole. So that's their side. It's, it's their pole. It's their property, so it's, it's up to them. Brings up an insurance issue though, doesn't it? But, yeah. Other than that, I mean, it's just.
They're put into, in front of the resident, you know, does a resident have any right to say, no?
Well.
They, they just, okay, we want coverage here. We're going to put this up. I don't need that coverage, okay? And I don't want that in front of my house. Do I have a right to say, don't put that here? Can I, well, who would I complain to? Would it make any difference in the right of way? Right now, without having any.
Well, let's, without taking too much time on this and not having all the answers, working my way backwards, I would say, okay, so as a municipality, we have easements to enter people's property, to do things, to change things. If we have to put a drain inlet somewhere, we can put a drain inlet there and do what we need to do. And I hesitate only because, in, in using this analogy, because R G and E has easements, right, for all of their infrastructure, in the backyard, side yards, front yard, all that. They own the poles, but in, in this particular case, it's different because it's not R G and E, it's not R G and equipment, right? It's a subcontractor coming in and putting equipment on their poles. Right, and so again, I don't know if R G and E would have to change the easement and the nature of the agreement. Those are questions I can't answer currently.
Well, hopefully we'll get some answers with moving folks.
Have you received formal applications for these or?
No, because I've kind of been stalling with some of them. The gentleman from Nixon Peabody has been calling me more and more frequently. So the one on Barrett, I will.
He represents Verizon.
Yes.
Well, you only got 30 days to tell them, from receipt of an application, you only got 30 days to tell them your application is either complete or it's not complete, and this is what you got to get us. And then, and then beyond that, you've only got, you've got 90 days, a 30 day schedule.
Yeah, absolutely.
You got 90 days to either approve or disapprove.
Well, I know.
Otherwise it's deemed approved.
If, if I do not approve it, then they can go to the board of appeals.
Well, when they do that, that's longer time.
And then if, if it comes to the board of appeals, it's 62 days for them to approve.
It's all superseded by federal law. That's where the 30 and the 90 days goes wrong. The 62 days doesn't mean anything.
No. Not the approval process?
Have they filed a formal permit?
No, no, nobody's filed anything formal. We've just been discussing what's required. He wants to, to kill a cliche, cross all his Ts and down all his Is, as most attorneys do. That he wants to make sure that when they file, they have everything they need and from us and everything. And what's nice is he's being very cooperative. I've run into some companies in the past that threaten lawsuits because I wanted to follow through with our procedure, and they said, well, we don't have to. We don't even, you know, need a permit or you have to grant the permit, whatever.
Don, in, in the right, in the roads, are, are G and E's working within the right of way, which is different than if they have an easement, right? If they have an easement, the easement's for a specific purpose. It's spelled out with an easement. Does they have, do they have the same thing, their operation within the right of way? So assuming this is a perceived public, none of it the same as the utilities do. But if they are allowed to run their poles therefore to distribute electric, and now they're utilizing their poles to distribute a cellular signal. It seems like they're not doing what they have the approval, if you will, or the right to, right to do through some sort of agreement or right of way. And I think of this because I think about NICOM, there was a discussion on, for the highway school one time about a, when he was in Massachusetts, where a resident sued the municipality because they were running a water line in front of his house. And they didn't have, they had a right of way for road purposes, but not for to run their water line. And I think they had to modify or do some other changes because they ended up winning. The resident ended up winning, and he was fighting him because he, but then. The resident ended up winning, and he was fighting him because he said that's not what the purpose of the easement or the agreement was, you know, or they were using it for a different purpose that was spelled out. So.
Well, an easement, if they put it in the road or within the public right of way, you know, it's whatever the, whoever owns, you know, whether it's the village or the county or the state, whoever's road it is, they can decide what they want to allow in it right of way and what they don't. An easement is different. You're right. Originally, you know, when the subdivisions were built or whatever, you know, RG&E got an easement, and the Rochester Telephone gets an easement, but it was for those purposes. And there's, you know, so I don't know whether RG&E can go and modify the easement or not.
Same pole, same pole, you have, you've got electric, you've got phone, you've got cable.
Most pole lines have a clearance measurement, and I know that the telephone has to be minimum of forty-eight inches from any power. And so that's the same, TV also. And so each utility has their own space on the pole.
Mm-hmm.
And so if Cable TV or Verizon came through and said, I want to attach right above the telephone, then they're attaching illegally because they can't get into that space between the electric and the telephone, because it's a danger. Or, you know, there's an awful lot of things that come into consideration with that, and one is the light cranes. They can't, you know, and they can't be that close to a light crane. That's what the book, like, may post up. So there's an awful lot that has to be figured out between Verizon and RG&E, the telephone and the TV. They all have to agree to give space to Verizon to attach their stuff. And I've seen them attach at the top of telephone poles. I don't know how they could do it.
And like I said last, the last meeting was that when I talked to RG&E, they have a lot of them waiting, because they're still being reviewed, trying to figure out what to do with them.
Well, then you give, I mean, it's, it makes sense, because in order to put something on top of the pole, you've got to go near power lines and et cetera. Right out here, you've got twelve thousand volts. So you, it's as safe as you for them, as far as where they're going to attach the pole. That's why we have to have this.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Jake?
I only have six things.
I know.
There's, I think in the packets, there's something this week, so I wanted to see if we could put it on for the next meeting to consider. I think Don reviewed some resolutions. It's about the purchasing group. It's a Houston Galveston area council, they call it, that, here's another similar one that's a nationwide group, that's NJETA, the National Joint Power Alliance. And basically, what these groups do is bid project or bid equipment sales or services. They do a formal bid for them, and then they open up the results of those bids to local municipalities and other people to, or I guess municipalities, school districts, things like that, to be able to use and make their equipment purchases. I think it's a good option to have, I think, for doing something. But in order to get a quote or to use those contracts or to consider those contracts and get a quote, you have to be kind of a member of the group. You have to sign an agreement with the group to build a, I guess, a DMN. And all their resolution, when we look at their procurement policy, it's kind of implies that we, anything over ten thousand dollars, state laws, anything over ten thousand dollars for equipment or supplies, or over thirty-five thousand dollars for a public works contract has to be bid according to General Municipal Law 103, which has a formal bidding process. It's still included in there, this piggybacking provision that they passed a few years, I think it was in 2013, where, you know, Town Avon buys a truck, and it's the exact kind of truck that we like, or however the contract's written up. We can say, yeah, we'll take one of those too, that, for, then we know what the price is and everything ahead of time. But that contract would have to have a provision that allows that to open up to other municipalities to use. This, from my understanding, I think you see in the thing that these are all bid according to General Municipal Law or the provisions of it, you know, the intent of it. So if you want to look at that, if we look at it for next meeting, are any questions? It'd be great to be able to have that. Next thing is North Avenue project.
That, you provided in here the existing procurement policy and then a modification of that.
Yeah, and I think that was just kind of a clarification. I think you could probably read that and say, yeah, as long as it's done in accordance with General Municipal Law 103, which does have the provision for piggybacking, but it says, you know, I said ten thousand, it's twenty thousand, excuse me. All purchases of supplies or equipment which shall exceed twenty thousand dollars in a fiscal year or public works contracts over thirty-five thousand shall be formally bid pursuant. So there's, you know, if you formally bid it pursuant to 103, you couldn't do the piggybacking because it was formally bid. But I just figured when the auditors come through and look at stuff, they're going to, hey, this says that, you know, it depends on interpretation. So if we add that section in there saying that if it was bid already or you're piggybacking it, it kind of, kind of covers both ends of the spectrum.
Down there, the second to the bottom paragraph, which says the village decides to clarify the procurement policy to include provisions authorized within the General Municipal Law 103, purchase with the use of contract Latin net, where I saw the verbiage there from another thing, left by the United States or any agency thereof, any state or any other political subdivision or district there. And so long as the contract is Latin and man that constitutes competitive bidding consistent with mere state law, that's the little part that we're actually putting in there that allows this to happen.
Yeah. And again, I said to Don, I think, I think you could read that, our current procurement policy, however you wanted to read it, I guess. You could say, yeah, it's covered in there, or you could say, since there's a little bit of unclearedness, unclarity, so I'll make up another word, but since it's not overly clear, I just wanted to see if we could do that, just to make sure going forward that, you know, if you do the...
Daryl, you're right. That General Municipal Law, Section 103, Subdivision 16, that's the piggyback provision that the state added in 2013. So that language is taken right out of that section of the General Municipal Law.
Well, that's what we're looking at, and they can change, and they can in fact do this.
Right. Because I think Jake's right. Arguably, if you look at the existing policy where it says shall be formally bid, well, if you piggyback on another contract, is that formally, being formally bid or not? And you could, you know, formal bidding is formal bidding, and it's not, you can't use somebody else's contract.
Are we leaving it? Well, this is a medley, so...
It's adding...
It's adding in.
So in paragraph two of the procurement policy, there'll be a 2A, and maybe this one should actually be a 2B, probably is how it should look. You know, 2A would be the, would be the existing, and then 2B is, would be the addition.
So three, remain, four, five, six.
Yeah, yeah. Everything else, everything else would be the section. Yeah.
I like the idea. It's going to take money, doesn't cost anything.
Right. Right. Yeah, it's a lot cheaper if you don't have to go through the formal bidding requirements and purchase something and say that those costs...
Yep.
Anything else? You have six other, right?
Yes, I did have five other, but I added one in the meantime. Just want to update the North Avenue Connector project. You know, everybody driving by, the sidewalks on the east side of the road are complete. The pole bases are all in.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the pole bases are in, are almost in. That side, you're putting some other bases in. Running conduits are going to kind of flip-flop over the west side here soon, but they're, it's going along. It hasn't been without hiccups, but I think I'll dig in the ground. There's going to be hiccups and surprises and fun stuff, so they're all going along pretty, pretty well, and I think it's going to be...
To that budget.
Very nice at the end. There's, the contract itself had a change order in there for fifty thousand, or up to fifty, and I think there is a twenty-one so far. So there's, it's moving, it's moving along, and there's going to be some, some things that were a little less and some things are a little more, so. We are just to update, we, you know, obviously sent out letters and everything, but if you drive by Curtis, we're doing letters on Curtis' part this year and ahead of an eventual mill and pave there. Brush, I went, you know, I don't know if you're going to see this, but we remind everybody to brush out Sunday the eighth because of the, it's the first full week, but since the first full week is a holiday, it's not really a full week. So it's on our website all the time, and so Sunday the eighth is, or excuse me, Sunday the eighth, or Monday the ninth is when we're going to start to brush pickup, and we make one pass throughout the village. So we ask that everybody has it out that Sunday evening. Many of you, speaking about RG&E, they've come up a lot tonight. I had left a message and I got a pretty quick phone call back from RG&E Forester last I wasn't really happy when I called them. I don't know what they're doing to the trees. They stopped, or now we pulled the crew out of here, and I said, we gotta, we're going to try to meet up this week if it didn't work, so I got to get the base of them again or to see when we can get together. You know, we spent quite a bit on trees and on maintenance of the trees. Some history, up till about five, six years ago, we used to work with RG&E on the trimming, and we'd split the cost on streets where there were wires. So we trim around the wires, two is part of our, our trimming, and we do that every, trees basically is trimmed at least once every five years. You know, we do about twenty percent every year. They decided not to, not to do that anymore. This year happened to be one of the years where the road that they were going down and trimming the trees was one of the same ones that we had on our schedule to trim. Luckily, you know, they went by first, but just hacked the trees.
Literally.
There, it's insane.
Dunning was terrible.
Yeah, so I, and I called, I said, this, you got to stop. This one size doesn't fit all. He's like, yeah, well, we trim the trees, and then we, you know, every five or six years, and then we come back, and there's a lot of growth, so it's not enough, so we have to trim them more. I think boils down to the governor of the state got on their case a lot because we had eighty mile an hour winds and tree limbs fell off because we had eighty mile an hour winds. And there was power outages, and the, and the state wasn't happy with their response. I think they got power up pretty fast, made things safe pretty fast, worked pretty well, stayed in great communication with everybody. But I think since they got a hard time about that, it's, it's almost childish. They're going to go, okay, you'll be for that? So, all right, I'm going to go back twenty feet away from all the wires, and then we'll be fine. Well, if you take a tree with a root system this big, supporting a tree this big, and then cut half the tree off, you're probably going to have a lot of growth because you still have the same amount of roots.
Yes.
So it's got to go somewhere. And he obviously gets that, I think that's coming from way above inside, but I said, we got to have a different conversation here. We're, I can see if you're out in a rural area that nobody's trimming trees, do what you got to do, but we trim the trees. We're taking care of the trees. I'd love to work with you again where we can split the cost and maybe even trim them a little more, maybe do twenty-five percent a year, so it's only, it's only four years. But we can't, we don't have to trim limbs away, you know, anything that might come closer to the next fifty years. That's ridiculous what they were doing, so. They probably will be back, but I think we're going to hook up with them and discuss the, discuss what we're doing.
The way it looks like to me is that the limbs that are left are going to fall in the road and not on the wires, you know?
Yeah.
So they're hanging out over the road. It's terrible.
It, it's, yeah. I, in fact, I stopped the one, the guy, he was up in the tree, and I went out, he shut everything off, and I'm like, it was the same company that's doing it. And I don't blame the company, I won't even mention them because it's not their fault. They're doing what they're paid to do. But it was the same company that was going to do maintenance pruning for us. And I said, are you guys trimming for us right now, or are you still doing RG&E? No, we're trimming for you. I said, you guys, I don't know what you're doing. We're not trimming around the wires. This is insane. And I said, look what you did on me. He goes, I haven't been in that tree yet. So he was, he said, the other crew already came through, it was, it was a different, different crew came down that was trimming for RG&E, and then the other, because you have certifications for trimming around power lines and things like that. So he goes, that was the other crew. I'm working this way. He goes, I haven't been to that one yet. So I said, all right, our guy, you know, our tree trimming effort continued, RG&E stopped. But yeah, it's, it's insane, so.
Actually, I was looking this up this week, and RG&E has a brochure now, and it shows the picture of the tree and a nice trim job. They said, nope. And then it shows the branch from that whole trim job coming out. I said, nope, that's the correct way.
Yeah. It's like, okay. It's one of the things, as surprisingly as I am, I got a lot of calls yet. They are, like in front of my house, they cut a pretty decent sized limb off. It used to look like Cookie Monster took the bite out of it. Now it looks like someone chopped it. Anything over six inches, they cut in the log shapes or lengths and left them on my front yard. I'm going to give them a holler and see if I can get them back. I might drop them off over on Plank Road for them. But I don't think you could, we, I was talking with Will. We have something in our code. You can't deposit, or must be deposited, anything on private property or public property. It's not your property. Once they cut it off the tree, it becomes waste. It becomes garbage or refuse or whatever the definition, it's debris. Yeah, they, they've got to come back, and that's, we're going to be pushed to get them to come back and get the stuff out of there. When it's growing there, it's part of a tree. Once they cut it off, it's garbage. They can't litter.
Ultimately, RG&E the responsibility, I would think.
No, they...
They're the ones that have it to be done.
Yeah, no, RG&E, they kind of boast about it in their brochure or on their, online that, no, they'll cut up, they'll take anything less than six inches apart. The other side, in the nice manageable pieces, manageable to me and manageable to, you know, old eighty-year-old Mrs. McGill, Cuddy, there might be a little, two different things, so I don't, it's mind-boggling to me, so.
You're looking into it.
Yes. I'm going to move on.
Be nice about it.
Not always nice.
No, you don't have to.
Just a quick, I think the tank parcel, I don't, we were working on getting a, I don't know if she's ultimately going to do a deed or a abstract or that.
Well, she was trying to work on a deed rather, because the abstract is expensive. So if we can get a deed for that property, that would be the, that's all you need, really. Bike, you're supposed to call Pearl. She was going to contact you.
Yeah, I emailed her the other day, which sent the thing, and she said, thanks, that was a lot of help, and I haven't heard anything, so.
Oh, okay, because I know she's working on it.
And finally, the bike act that we discussed last time, we're, I'm working on prices on one. I think I showed everybody, and with green, in our village green, we're going to try to do, but, but more to come, because there's a big range of prices they do. When I emailed that company, the prices were between two hundred and...
I heard someone was donating that. Am I incorrect by hearing that?
I think, yeah, I think it was a law firm, it's probably...
Put it in front of berries, it'll be good.
Yeah, I think, if you ultimately, if we get those, I think it'd be nice to have, you know, probably the freight, probably makes sense to have one freight yard...
Put it in front of berries will be good.
Yeah, I think, and ultimately, if we get those, I think it'd be nice to have, you know, probably the freight, probably makes sense to have one freight yard, maybe a three or four that we could put around. And, and this might not be the final, the final thing, depending on what they say with the dollar sign in front of it. Oh, yeah, there's, it's, if you wanna have some fun, get on the line and look for custom bike racks, and, there's, yeah, there's a lot of neat things that, they're out there, a lot of neat shapes and sizes and designs.
You can even switch out the inside plates, like, whether it's like a holiday, or, and I thought, oh, good heaven.
Yeah, the little bike thing in front of McDonald's is kind of cute.
Yep, they've got those, and some of them, that's-
Upscale.
Yeah, some of them look like, almost look like signs more in a bike rack, so I don't wanna add, you know, where-
This is what the, the city put on, New South Elan Street.
Oh, I saw those. Yeah, those are really cool.
They look like handlebars on them, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of-
Jerry was showing all these pictures of the, the different bike racks. They had one bike rack, like the old bike with the big wheel in front. He said, he said, "They're cool by the museum", they had other bikes that, or, excuse me, other racks that were for, say, a bar or a restaurant, or whatever, and the shape was in the shape of whatever the thing was. So, you could get recreative.
Okay, go on, the bike.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
There, we get a breakdown of the weekend weather one more time.
Yes.
And Jerry, uh, Jerry has offered his pool, and he wants to successfully knock. Pool is open.
Oh, they should know.
Are we on the address?
Tell, tell the crowd here, what's the address?
What's the address?
Baker Street.
Everybody show up at Jerry's on Friday.
Sunday's supposed to be the big hot one.
I would suggest Daryl's pool, because it's bigger, but it has a lot of green stuff on the bottom of it.
Anything else? Done?
Go on.
I'm going to the pool now.
Where are you going this weekend? Jerry's.
Baker Street.
All right, well, we have no meeting, uh, next week. Workshop for July, we can cancel. And enjoy the Fourth of July. Our next meeting will be on July tenth. It will have the organizational, uh, organizational meeting first, and then we will move into regular village board business. And then, uh, the last meeting in July will be the twenty-sixth. So, um, thank you all.
Thank you.
That's correct. Anything else?
No, sir.
Nope. Uh, can I have, let's see, it is, uh, right now, eight thirty-three, and a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming.
That's a funny name.